Well, it gives me just enormous pleasure today to be holding a town hall meeting in January, where I'm not, for the first time in four years, announcing budget cuts. Which leads us to the topic of why might we hold a town hall? And that has been quite simply stated. So many people are asking, are we okay? What's going on? Where are things going? That I felt like it was actually a good time to give a little catch-up as to what's gone on in the past semester and the progress that we have made in creating a new stable platform for UNLV to grow and prosper from. So, I would like to introduce first the members on the platform. And I encourage you, if you have any difficult questions, to please direct them at them. Jerry Bomani, our Senior VP for Business and Finance. Michael Bowers, our Executive Vice Provost and President, Executive Vice President and Provost. Greg Brown, Faculty Senate Chair. Michael Gordon, Graduate Student Rep. And Sarah Seines, our CSUN Rep. So, yes, a round of applause is due. And would be remiss if I didn't point out that Dan Klatch is here. Someone who has been a great partner over the past year in helping to make sure that UNLV can advance its agenda. Now, I'm in the awkward position of not having the Madonna mic and having a screen that I can't actually see that I'm queuing off of. So, excuse me if I kind of wander around to the side of the podium to really kind of launch this discussion. And I didn't really want it to be a kind of discussion. It was a lengthy PowerPoint discussion. I'm going to go over a bunch of things fast. And if you can kind of absorb it as though it were, you know, an un-block experience, I think that would be a really good way to handle things. We're going to talk first about our current situation. Just to be clear, our enrollments down. I have some concerns about freshman enrollment, probably around the rising costs of our educational programs. And our staff numbers are down. We've lost about 700 lines in the past four years. But, we start to move into stronger, a stronger position and solid ground. Our fiscal posture is stable. Clearly, stable. We're very confident about our ability to deal with future challenges. We don't expect any more layoffs. And just in case anybody in the room was concerned about it, please, at this point there are no exercises being planned, and I don't believe that we'll have to look at any more in the future. We are hiring, and that's great news. Somewhere around 90 new faculty and staff will be hired to support student services and to put critically needed classes in place. We're focused on academic quality and economic diversification for our region. More on that later. And we are building on a smaller and sustainable base. Now, one of the things that we did in the State of the University address earlier this year is we laid out the highlights of a planning tune-up session. And if there's one thing I would like you to take home from today's discussion, is that when we bothered to plan and we bring in many, many different stakeholder groups and we lay out sets of priorities, we don't just put that off in a corner somewhere. We assign it out to all the relevant parties and then we begin to implement. And I think you'll be heartened that this year, instead of talking about cutting, our planning progress is rather remarkable. Let's take a look at the planning progress that we've made to date. First, something that I think we were all very, very excited to be able to do, something we've been promising for three years, is we finally increased PhD stipends. Now, why in the face of budget cuts would we do that? First, because our graduate population has fallen. We're more focused now on PhD production instead of Master's production. And frankly, our stipends had grown non-competitive at a national level. This should restore our ability to attract and retain very, very strong students who can not only support our scholarship, but will make us proud as they leave UNLV. Secondly, approximately 90 faculty and staff searches are ongoing. And I will say to you, based off of the hires we've had now, so termed opportunity hires, these hires will significantly expand our diversity. And here's an incredibly good note. Just like in a downed real estate market, if you have money, you can get good deals. This is a down hiring market for faculty who are just entering academia. On a national basis, cuts have frozen markets. This year, we had money to invest in faculty hires. And I will tell you, it's the best-looking incoming group of junior faculty that I have ever seen. And some of the achievements that they've made already walking in the door are phenomenal. And I look over at some of you where I've said, yes, please, let's move on to hire. They've expanded our diversity and they're very, very strong. You're all going to be proud of who we're bringing in this year. Our general education plan and first-year programs have been approved and are being implemented. And that's a great partnership that's growing between Faculty Senate and the University Administration. Our Brookings minors in place. We're thinking, we're teaching Think Tank 101 as we speak. New scholarship award programs are in place. These are very exciting. And I know Luke in Enrollment Management is really working hard with these. And we're using them for recruiting our Fall '12 class, which we hope will be a very, very strong class. As we look at some of the things that we've discussed, I would love to report to you that our health benefit situation, COLA, merit, and pay cuts and furloughs are all fixed. They certainly aren't by any means, but I want to say, not only has this been a top priority for us, last Board of Regents meeting, our system has adopted commitments to improving all of these. And that means the Board of Regents are now teed up to help us in critical areas. And hopefully, our legislators will be as well. Formula funding is being assessed. And unless you don't read the newspapers, you know that there's been an active controversy about it. But I will tell you, there are high principles at stake. And what we're committed to is helping to build a better state by using a formula that makes us all produce around what the state's most critical and urgent needs are. We have a faculty awards program put in place to foster research and scholarship. Dollars are being given out from small to large. In some cases, a few dollars help people with critically needed scholarship to get them over the hump. At other places, we've made investments that are more significant in an effort to increase our federal grants and contracts. And of course, we've had some challenges in that arena in the past few years as we've lost faculty. And now, what we need to do is reinvest in our critical faculty infrastructure and give people a chance to excel. We have begun integrate to implementation with Jerry and Steve Zink from System in Charge. And we have launched our Activity Insight Faculty Database. And I'll kind of chuckle. I know that that's been a little bit of challenge for faculty who've been involved in that. But when we clear the bugs, and thank you for being the guinea pigs for this program, when we clear the bugs, this will really allow us to utilize faculty-based data and unit-based data in a much more productive fashion. We have continued progress on our campus football stadium. I suspect I'll get more questions on that. I'll just say, if things are looking good right now and the team is strong. We opened up our Men in Hall Practice Facility. And we have been developing responses to an exercise that we launched earlier this year called Listening to Departments, where we said, can we have direct communication with faculty and departments about how they see, what they see as the things we need to do in order to improve their reputations, their national reputations, their scholarly output, and their educational programs? And I will tell you, I thank you all for the responses that you sent in. We're going over them right now. There'll be an organized response in which we'll talk both with colleges and departments, or at least department heads, and in some cases, specific departments. A few of the proposals were very exciting and innovative and things we hadn't heard before. So, I really thank all of you who put time in on that. We are continuing, we're using one-time and continuing funds that we've allocated to the library to retain our cereals collection. That was one of the commitments that we made earlier. And I won't tell you that we're out of the woods yet, because the rising costs of cereals are always a threat. But we're in better position for the next couple of years than most of us expected we'd be. We got the Lee Business School named. It provides 10 endowed faculty positions and a set of student scholarships. I'll point out, we had 1.5 endowments in this campus for faculty last year. We now have 11.5. And in addition, in the next bullet point, you can see, we have 26 of our angel endowments, quasi-endowments, that we will be able to use, both to retain good faculty here and in some cases, to recruit some of the faculty that we're bringing in. And I think this is very auspicious. I said I'd commit fundraising to building scholarships for students and endowments for faculty. And in fact, if you look at where our endowment growth has been, it's all around these efforts. And I think investing in people is the first commitment that we have to this campus. We've had an 8% tuition increase approved. I'll point out, for UNLV, because we're going to lose a surcharge, that's a 5% net. But it will net out about $5.5 million that we can use to reinvest in student services and critically needed faculty positions to clear the bottlenecks that were created by some of the vacancies that we experienced. So, that's really good news. We've authorized hires in student services immediately. And UNLV was ranked the 12th most popular university in the country. And we can all laugh. Some of us saw Richard Lake's article, in which he called Duke nerds. And I just love that article. But I will say that this is actually a quantitative metric that's based off the number of people accepted versus the number of people who enroll. Our number is about 60%, which means we're the first-choice institution of about 60% of the students we accept. And that is very, very good news and puts us, I believe, above Princeton, but below Harvard. Not bad. One of the things that we did at the end of last year, or at the end of the State of the University, is I asked, what does UNLV 2.0 look like? I want to just take an opportunity here to say, if you saw, if you just reviewed that list of the things that we have already begun to implement, and some of those were purposefully understated, because the successes have been remarkable. We are about three-quarters of the way through the list that we established in the State of the University address. And we are moving towards actually executing and implementing the rest of our strategic plans. We lay out strategic plans. I owe to all of you and the many people who are on the specific workgroups and the cabinet members who are in the room, a debt of gratitude. You took those plans and you have executed them. And we are no longer in a position where we're worried about where the axe will fall next. We're now looking at how we're building and implementing. And when we say we're going to do something, we do it. And I think that's the best possible news I can give you. Every single thing that we've done is focused on building the university that you want to be a part of. A more selective university with an emphasis on student retention and success. We want to foster better learning and research environments for an increasingly qualified and diverse student and faculty body. We want to have an increased emphasis on scholarship and research to improve our reputation and funding. We want to expand our commitment to economic diversification through focused hires. And we want focused growth around a core of sustainable programs. Every one of those things, we have implemented steps to achieve. Every one of those things, we have begun funding and have made substantial progress in. And while we aren't yet at the critical reputational plane, I know you all aspire to, we're making good, solid progress. And that's the message today to all of you. Things are going well, thanks to your sacrifices. Things are going very well, thanks to your hard work. I appreciate everything that all of you do. And I think you all deserve a big round of applause for what you've achieved, what you've been through, and the fact that we're building once again. Thank you. Now, I suspect that I haven't covered everything that everyone needs to hear about. And so, what we have here is a good panel of folks who can help us address issues or may want to raise a few themselves. And I invite anybody who has questions for us now to address them. So, it's that good, huh? Steve, why don't you find a microphone over here?
Steve Miller, Economics. You were talking about reading the newspaper, and I was yesterday morning. And I saw my counterpart up, and UNR had a piece about the funding formula. And I don't know all the intimate details about this, but when I was reading his article, and I know Elliot well, and he's not a crazy guy. He uses the data well. But I was a bit surprised by the content of the article. It seemed to be counter to what I've been hearing down here. Could you comment on that? Or are you, or someone comment on that? Certainly, we need to, we don't need to start a fight within the system. That's not the point. Because the system is underfunded, as we all know. But comment on that specific.
I'm going to go ahead and kind of take the brunt of this one on my shoulders. And if anybody else would like to jump in, they're welcome to. But I appreciate the question. There's no doubt in my mind that there are those who will perceive that what we're doing with the funding formula is part of a north-south fight. That is simply not the case, nor should it be the case. I will repeat, and I will repeat this in every opportunity, there is no UNR-UNLV battle in this. What we need to do and focus on is not on these types of petty squabbles. And I believe that driving wedges through articles, as you saw yesterday, is very, very counterproductive to having a discussion that's already very difficult and emotionally charged. So, I believe we need to stick to high principles. And the high principles that I would aspire to are those that serve our state. We need to produce more graduates. Period. This state needs more graduates. We do not have enough. We have to recognize that as we fund higher education. I believe that we need to be more entrepreneurial in our approach and that students' tuitions should stay on campus. Now, when I say it that simply, that's a slightly more complex phrase. But I'm going to simply say, we ought to be able to be entrepreneurial and use non-residential tuitions to help subsidize Nevada residents and to make sure that our non-residential students are getting the services they need in critically needed areas. And I think we should be rewarded for bringing the best and brightest from around the world to our region. I also believe that we need to be the best possible partners. We know how to be with our state around economic diversification. We face a future that's challenging. We know that we can do better. I see a renaissance in Las Vegas that I believe is going to lead us into very, very good new economies. And I see a desire to bud off new technology-based industries from the core of dominant industries that we have now. UNLV has to be in the mix. And I want to thank folks like Don Snyder, Tim Rama, Jeff Cope, Patty Ainuzi, who were all at a meeting that we had last week with all of the chief information officers and IT CEOs in the state. And we listened to what they needed to have delivered to them. And we're working aggressively to try to come up with programs in a flexible way that help to foster the growth of these new economies, especially in tech areas. And I just say, that's critical. How do we incentivize that when we're beginning to write a formula? And how do we support what research universities do that is unique for regions? Those are the principles that I would focus on, and I'll repeat them. Doing what the state needs, producing more graduates. Making sure that we're entrepreneurial and once and for all, we separate formulas and tuitions, so that we don't confuse state general funding with those issues. And we can be more entrepreneurial. And nurturing economic diversification for our state. Those are high principles that I believe are in the best interests of a healthy Nevada and a prosperous future. And I'll leave it at that. Are there any other questions?
Shelley Bratton, OIT. I think it was inadvertent, Dr. Smatras, that you had on one of your PowerPoints the EVP and Provost Search.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I probably flipped by one whole slide. I can't actually see the front. Let me, let me go back and see if I can find that. Ah, I'm sorry. Yes, we are, we have launched the EVP&amp;P search, and I didn't mean to skip by that. The process is going a little slower than we like, but then again, things in academics often do. With a little luck, we will have good on-campus interviews well ahead of graduation, so that everyone can be involved. Yes, Mark?
Good afternoon, President Smatras. My name is Mike Wild, and I'm the current Chair of the Fiscal Affairs Committee for the Faculty Senate. If I may, I'll read this, because it's a statement and a question all in one, written by committee, so you can imagine how good it is. For that, I crave your forgiveness. All UNLV faculty and staff recruited over the last three years have actually experienced a reduction in pay since they became employees here. All staff have increased, over the past, are facing a fourth year of reduction in compensation and benefits. Being a member of the administrative faculty, I know all too well that administrative faculty have got very transportable skills, marketable skills. You mentioned the progress towards tech future. I know the challenges faced by some of my colleagues right here from OIT that we have in retaining these staff. We've got, but yet, they remain here. And they remain here like classified staff do, because they're committed to the institution. And I think that should be noted, as I'm sure you've mentioned on many occasions. But what we would like to do, as the committee has charged me to seek a view, is request that you impress upon the Board of Regents that we, as a body, would like to see prioritization of the restoration of compensation and benefits. There is a fear in some quarters that the Board of Regents may simply respond, well, that's a matter for the legislature. And if that's the case, it may do us all a disservice. The fear being that if the legislature say, well, the Board of Regents don't seem to be on board with that prioritization, well, why would they? So, with that in mind, that's what I would ask you to do. And that's the question. Would you be willing to take such a view to the Board of Regents, please?
I am perfectly willing to take that view to the Board, but you need to know, and I'm looking at our chancellor here, is there any day that I've shown up at a Board meeting where I haven't reiterated this topic? I am a staunch supporter that we see a restoration of our healthcare benefits, that we see an end to the furlough system, that we see restoration of the pay cut salary, and that COLA and merit are restored. And there's a practical reason for me wanting that, aside from the obvious reasons. And I'll point out, we all know that in addition to having endured all that, that workloads have increased. We've often made two jobs into one, or even three jobs into one. And this is going on around the campus, especially in IT areas, where the marketplace is very, very good right now. We have, on occasion, offered compensation to retain members, but that's because we can't allow everyone to go all at once in a critical area of IT support. That said, I think we should, we should give a nod to Chancellor Klatch, who made sure that in the Board's, in the strategic plan that the Board just approved in the last session, there was a specific statement as to ending the cuts and beginning to restore compensation. But we live in a market, and we can't afford not to pay people forever, because people have choices in markets. And so, I agree with you 100%, and I am utterly dedicated to not letting anyone forget that this needs to be a responsibility and an accountability.
Thank you. There was no implication on my part that you've done anything less than all that you could do. And the same for Senior Vice President Bomati with the Benefits Task Force. We applaud you for that. And I wouldn't want it to be misinterpreted that way. It's a case of our view is, mention it once, once more never hurts once less. It may be just that tipping point. That's, there's no criticism implied.
Well, I wouldn't want to put words in our chancellor's mouth, but I know that he's very aware of the situation, and I'm sure that he's very supportive of this request as well.
Thank you.
Perhaps I'll be a little bit, I'm sorry. I don't use microphones in my regular day job, so, excuse me. Perhaps I'll be a little bit more direct than my colleague, who's the Chair of the Fiscal Affairs Committee. I'm the Chair of the Administrative Faculty Committee, and as you know, we did that survey. And we've just uncovered some more depressing data from the task force, which suggests that our lower-paid colleagues are having even, are having an even more difficult time than our survey was able to present. So, what I would like to know from you, and I realize that I'm asking you to predict the future and to predict the minds of 13 individuals, but what I'd like to know from you is, when do you think we might see an agenda item, which the Regents could actually discuss, that would include a supplemental benefit? Because the prescription drug costs that our employees are now paying are, well, not to be dramatic, but I do have my PhD in theater. They're killing them. The prescription drug costs are literally killing our lower-paid employees and some of my colleagues in the administrative faculty.
Sean, I completely appreciate the stance that you've taken, the role you've served, the fact that you've administered those surveys. And I will tell you, there is no one who is more committed than I am or the folks you see appear to the restoration of those benefits. I would say, UNLV appears to be in a unique situation in which we believe that we could help to provide a supplement to employees, but this is a system action and will have to be taken as such. I don't know when that item would be agendized, but I will invite, again, I jokingly refer to Jerry as the most tenacious bulldog I know. On this topic, he is utterly dedicated, and I'd ask him to come to the podium and express what he believes will go on in the next few months.
The System Task Force met last week, and we met for the first time with the System Consultant that was hired to help us look at these issues and provide ideas about how we could structure other benefit options, which we're undertaking at this point in time, at this point in time with their help. In other words, right now, that consultant is helping us identify any and all options to help everybody with benefits, including those that may be direct benefit to individuals or some type of insured product that would be purchased either by the university and/or the individual that would help fill in some gaps in coverage. I expect that it'll be, I think what we are looking at was the end of March, before we will have that information, assuming data is forthcoming for the consultant to complete their work. At that point in time, as a committee, as a task force, we plan to do, look at that data. Probably will have some recommendations, don't know what the date is, but some recommendations that we would then forward up through to the chancellor. I think what the chancellor's done in the past is reviewed that information with the presidents, and then they will determine at that point in time what next step should be done. I should highlight that our schedule was sensitive to the fact that, I believe there's an April 20th, plus or minus, special board meeting scheduled that the System staff on the task force highlighted. And so, we were trying to be sensitive to that date, so that if we had recommendations, they could be prepared and forwarded prior to that date. And then, looking at open enrollments for FY '13. Again, do not know what our recommendations would be, whether or not they would be supportive, what the financial costs of those might be. And there's a lot of tech, there's a lot of sensitivity and complexity in terms of how the system could offer supplemental benefits because of the relationship with PEBP, especially for the state classified. Because the Board of Regents has full authority over academic and administrative faculty, but there are differences with how the state classified is structured. So, a lot of complexity, a lot of issues, but the main answer is, we're on the case. We're preparing recommendations. I expect they'll go forward, and they will, I expect, specifically address how to cover gaps in current employment.
Are there any more questions? Oh, good. Sarah?
I'll ask on behalf of the students. Again, I'm Sarah Seines. Thank you. I just want to know, going back to the funding formula, what is happening here at this university to make sure that student fees and tuition aren't being used as state funds?
I can't give you a great answer about here, because UNLV does not control how its funds are used or distributed in terms of that overarching question. We certainly know how we can spend the funds that we retain on campus. We have laid out a position. And I will just say, and I can watch Dan either shake his head or roll his eyes, but in every single Council of Presidents, I reiterate our position. I haven't wavered just a heck of a lot. And for those of you who didn't hear what Chancellor Klatch just said, and it's actually very rewarding and gratifying, the chancellor said that he utterly endorses the position that we've espoused on tuition and fees. He is advocating actively for a separation, and that's a key part of the formula proposal that the chancellor is crafting and putting forward. And so, I think that's great news. If you've got the Council of Presidents who have supported it, and if you've got a chancellor who's supported it, it has a much higher probability of happening, which doesn't mean it's easy, because it still is ultimately a legislative. it's easy because it still is ultimately a legislative action. Are there any further questions?
Yes. John Farley, Physics Department and Nevada Faculty Alliance. Once more on the healthcare. What are the odds either from you or from the chancellor that we can get this healthcare issue on the Regents' agenda for April, for example? Even if, even if the task force report isn't fully ready to at least make the Regents aware of the scope of the problem. I, I'm delighted that, that you've spoken up for it on behalf of UNLV, but we're only, that's only one institution and what about the other institution presidents? I can, I can say that the health benefits issue is important for recruiting staff and retaining staff and for recruiting faculty and retaining faculty. I know of another university, not UNLV, where the salaries were really low and when people would come on recruiting visits, they would interview with the department, the members of the department would say, you'd be crazy to come here.
Well, people wouldn't be crazy to come to UNLV so first. Let's remember that. And you're all our own best advocates for making sure we hire and retain people. I, I, I would turn to the chancellor and, and not trying to put you on the spot, but do you believe this will be on the board for the April meeting or would you like to address it? Would someone bring the, okay. You can come on up on stage.
I was going to give you a handout. I'll tell you what, I, I'm not going to take recommendations to the board until I get them from the committee that, that I've established to bring them. So I don't want to bring something half-baked. But the, the more important part of your question, I think, is, is whether the board is sensitive to this issue and understands it. And I can't remember a Regents' meeting over the last year and a half where this hasn't been discussed, including the last Regents' meeting in this room where a number of the individuals who have already spoken and asked questions brought this up. And, and those of you who were here, I think, understood the, how, how deeply that was felt by the Regents. So I, I don't think we need to sensitize the Regents to how critical an issue this is because we've told them that over and over and over again. And, and when there's, when there's something to bring to the board, we'll look at it and, and, and bring it through. But I, I'm not going to bring it until I get a report from the committee.
I, I know members of the Board of Regents have spoken out on this, but you mentioned it's been a year and a half. You mentioned they've been discussing it for a year and a half.
Right. Well, you know, part of the issue here is we live in a biennial budget system and you're, you're not talking about just unilateral decisions here. You're talking about decisions, as Vice President Bhamati indicated, that ripple through the entire state and are built into our, our budget. And, and whether we can, can bring something that can have an effective date before we get a new biennial budget or not, I think is a real serious question. I, I, I mean, I wish, I wish I could reach in the hat and pull out a rabbit that would make you happy, but I, you know, I've just got to tell you the truth. We, we, we are doing everything we can, but, but we're in a system that has, has constraints.
Okay, so, so when do you think it would be on the Board of Regents?
Well, Mr. Bhamati indicated that he thought he'd have something that would be ready by the April 20 meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the question. Now I'm leaving.
We like it when you're in the hot seat.
I had, I, I was held up by teaching, so I apologize if I'm making you retell some of the story here, but I followed with interest the, the issues in the latest State of the Union address that seemed to be directed at higher education. And I noticed in, in the most recent edition of the Chronicle of Higher Education, some of the public university presidents, such as those as Illinois, have started sounding alarm bells about what they view as an oversimplified approach to a very complex problem. And I was wondering what yours and others' opinions are about this potential set of initiatives, whether there's a reason for concern or how we should respond to these sort of federal level initiatives or if you even think they're going to get off the ground at all.
You're asking me to be a political pundit and I don't really think that's going to be a place I feel comfortable or even speculating over. I, I would love to think that politics is an utterly rational exercise. I think we all know better. So let me just say, it's hurt enough for me to have any crisp understanding of where Nevada legislative politics around higher education will be, let alone federal issues. I think we all know what the climate is currently in, in Washington around sensitive issues that involve funding. And until something gets it more than half-baked, I think maybe, as the chancellor said, I'm not going to be in a place where I worry particularly about it. But I would invite Greg Michael or Jerry to discuss what they think probabilities are for any of that. And I see no spirit to take that. So, yeah, we're all pointing at Michael. I, I, I'll just say, right now, call it a pass for me and it, when, when and if things come down that are actually likely to be actionable, we will certainly be prepared for them. I know in terms of areas like financial aid and so forth, we have very good people in place who are quite far out ahead of the paperwork curve and that's where we have to continue to work. Are there any other issues? I see one more.
Tim Goteh under Disciplinary Studies. Neil, you mentioned slight concern about enrollment and freshman enrollment in particular, and you're attributing it to tuition increases. Is there some plan in place to sort of address that and sort of market UNLV differently to get to enrollment back?
Yeah, I think another bullet point, and again, it's because I just can't see very well over here that I missed, has to do with an incredibly great opportunity. Are, are many of you aware of the firm, UNR Partners? They're the firm headed up by Billy Vassiliadis and he's an alum. And he very much wants to help and support the university. So he has offered to do for us in a pro bono kind of way, with the exception of any, you know, physical hard costs that are retained, a, a good study on marketing and branding to project our reputation. And let's face it, when the basketball team does well, our national reputation grows, applications begin to spike, but that's not enough. UNLV has been dark in an advertising sense for at least four or five years and it's time we did a little promotion because what I want Nevadans to believe is that UNLV is the choice institution to go to in this state and that they can get what they need here and that we will serve them well. And so I think you're going to see in the next month or so, the beginnings of a, a campaign as well as some very focused marketing research that we're going to be doing. Now, you asked about freshman enrollment. I won't, it is perhaps glib to ascribe it to a single cause, whether it's reputational issues, affordability issues, whether it's availability of classes or because majors have been eliminated in some areas. It is a difficult and complex matrix. What we are doing is we have taken a very aggressive stance on enrollment management. And, and just in case you don't think I get down in the weeds, I do and generally people don't like it. But we have taken a strong hand over the last few years in redoing enrollment management under the leadership of Juanita Fain and Luke Schultheis. We have really expanded both the electronic components of our marketing as well as how well we recruit in Clark County and how well we recruit in high-target areas outside of our state. The yield, as evidenced by the U.S. News and World Report ranking us number 12 of accepted students, has grown rather dramatically. Three years ago, we weren't on the list. We were 25th last year, we're 12th this year. That still doesn't necessarily address what happens to what we refer to in the jargon as a bubble in the system. And we've had a bubble for two years in freshman enrollment and now a little bit of a bubble in transfer enrollment. So quite simply stated, we have capacity matching issues. We don't want to accept more students than we can serve well and give good degrees to. So whether our future is a future of dramatic rise, I doubt. Whether our future is a stable future, which is my hopes, we need to make sure we're recruiting at the right level and then we're improving retention. And if we improve retention, our FTE rise and actually our budgeted funds will increase. So it's in all of our best interest to provide great customer service, to care about the learning outcomes of our students, to promote their success in the classroom and outside of the classroom, and to make sure that we have a campus environment that is improving how well we serve our students and their success. And I, I can't think of a single suite of initiatives that we are more deeply committed to and passionately involved in. And I just say to all of you, we're here to educate the future leaders of this state and of the world. And I sure hope you're willing to roll up your shirt sleeves and join me in that task and making sure that they have a wonderful experience while they're here. Any more questions? I think we've just about worn out our welcome. I'll be happy to talk to you individually as this time is over. Thank you for an ordinary information update in Town Hall.